Be the statue of Nancy Hart and participate in that ceremony, everybody's welcome. That's the only thing I have, and I would like to say appreciate our road department, appreciate law enforcement, fire, and even the private citizens, everyone that was called out during those storms. We appreciate the job everyone done, very appreciative. And I'll move on to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't really have anything, Mr. Chairman, other than just to thank all of those that got out and worked hard to get our power back on, including mainly our MEA-EMCs, those guys were on it, you know, and they even brought in a couple of private contractors to help them out. So it was, it was a whole lot worse than most things, you know, Hart County didn't get really hit that hard, especially on the north end, but down the south end, it tore us up pretty good down that way. So a lot of people at it, our road departments, sheriff's departments, just city was up here, they was all over place trees. It was just a great work ethics, you know, for everyone to get out there and just pull together. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. We'll move to District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
I'll tell you one echo what Commissioner Sayre and Commissioner Bennett said about, you know, appreciate our public safety, our first responders, our EMC, all of our road department, all of our county employees that got out working probably late Saturday night and Sunday, Sunday, appreciate the job that they do, and also the civilians that helped move trees. Appreciate all the help we can get. Thank y'all. That's all I got.
We'll move to District Four, Commissioner Brown.
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those same sentiments for those that got out and helped clean up this mess. And the south end of the county got hit pretty hard in places, and be with those who, who still have cleanup to do and just ensure that that's done safely. I know there's a lot of trees still down, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
There was still forty people out of power this afternoon.
All right, we'll move on to twelve A, Amendment Chapter Forty-Six, Exemption, Third and Final Reading.
Good evening. There were no additional corrections or amendments. Y'all took that as a second reading with no additions. So I took out the highlights that just showed where we had made the changes and brought you one clean copy. If you all adopt it tonight, it is ready for execution. It does have a blank in it that it would be effective midnight. I'm assuming that will be tonight. Y'all need to decide that.
Okay. All right, can we take a motion to take this as the third and final reading? And it will go into effect as of midnight tonight? So move.
Should I take?
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote in favor. It's five oh vote. All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to twelve B, RFP, road study. I'll give Commissioner Brown the floor at this time.
Real quick, Terrell had worked out a request for proposal RFP to bid it out draft. And I apologize to, for not getting some kind of feedback on that beforehand, but went ahead and printed it out and figured we would go through this mainly so you guys can just, you know, look at these proposals, see if this is worthwhile on some of these corrections or additions. And then to, obviously, that's kind of why we're looking at this to stop or any other proposals or additions. If you look at the packet that you got here in red with the asterisk would be a proposed change or a proposed clarification within each item. So we'll start at item one, which is the purpose of this RFP. Right now it says Hart County seeking proposals from qualified and experienced engineering firms to conduct a comprehensive road engineer study. The goal is to assess current road and traffic conditions and develop a long-term transportation and safety improvement plan. I propose should we clarify if the RFP, which is cost plus qualifications, or should it be an RFQ qualifications only? Or maybe including both qualifications and pricing in the evaluation? You guys got any feedback on that in particular? Because I think it's, where it said RFQ, okay, it said RFQ in the motion, correct?
RFP.
RFP. Somewhere it had RFQ.
Seeking proposals from qualified and experienced engineering firms, that may be where that comes in there.
Okay. Maybe just clarifying just qualifications and pricing versus just sending qualifications only. Then we go to scope of work, which is Section Two, pavement condition assessment. I was seeing if we should add, putting more detail in there, approximately five hundred county maintained roads, or approximately five hundred miles of county maintained roads, and then using a recognized method such as paces or, I guess they probably call it Aces T M D six four thirty-three. Long story short, this essentially what is a method used at Georgia Department of Transportation.
What about any ground penetrating radar? I mean, I think we ought to put that in there. If they won't use it, so be it. It'll affect the cost, but it'll be more comprehensive.
There was one, one place that I, that was with you on that, Commissioner Dorsey, I always wanted to say where, if it was deliverables or... Basically having it where, when they present what methods they were going to be using, and then having a, I guess, options of what type of technology they would be using. Versus just, I think the standard was the zero to one hundred, I think that's the paces. And then the more extensive is some of these ground penetrating or late. One, one, it was either a county or a city that in their proposal RFQ, it mentioned, what was it trying to say? Some type of laser. I don't know if that's what the ground penetrating is, looked at as the laser. Would you think we need to put that there?
I mean, just such as, you're just making a recommendation. I don't see a problem with putting ground penetrating radar in there because you'll find differences in depth and thickness of pavement and differences in subsurface irregularities, pavement thicknesses. It was in that email I sent everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I copied it and put it in the packet.
And possibly, that's what I was thinking is some of these firms may have technology that's used.
That others don't.
And being able to detail that in their packet.
And I also think we need to put a crown evaluation on these things too. On the pavement condition assessment. Because you lose your crown, you lose the ability for water to drain.
Would they, would they not put the crown in the surface condition?
I would think that would be more.
In that rating?
Like looking at cracking and longevity, no, latitude, no, alligator cracking. But I think we need to specify a crown evaluation on there.
All right, going next to the traffic and engineering, this is still within that section two, scope of work. Traffic and engineering, the intersections adding to what is currently there. Do we need to put a number range such as, I put here, you know, the top twenty high volume or high crash intersections? Putting something there that is of measurables versus a vague, you know, major. Because right now we got analyzed major intersections, traffic flow, safety and signal, signalization needs.
Would it be better if we listed the specific intersections for them to look at and then rank or prioritize them based off of the criteria here?
I wonder if...
Instead of saying major intersections, because there's going to be some, we're not going to be able to do anything with, like your state highway intersections.
Correct.
I just think some of the ones that we've talked about before, if we could maybe list the top ten, top fifteen, and have them look at those and prioritize.
Yeah, we know more about that than they do, whether they will. Is that something that we could deliver to them on follow-up questions, Terrell?
Correct. That's, if you look in here, there's a pre, pre-meeting.
Okay.
Informational meeting before they turn in their RFP. Now I thought that's where we're going, whatever specifics.
But you only got seven days, or ten days to...
The dates is kind of just the normal stuff. We can just, just the date for the loan.
Because if you look at ten or twelve intersections, that's going to take a little while.
Yeah. Again, the pre, the pre-meeting I thought would be where we would specify in more detail exactly what you, what we want. I mean, it's going to be, I can put the categories in here, but minute details.
I think may, maybe...
That way you'd have all interested, interested bidders or people's going to turn and bid in the same room at the same time.
I think we ought to have it upfront in our RFP when it goes out. If we have to come back and do this next meeting, send it out or whatever, update, do an addendum, that's fine. We can do that. But I think it'd be better if we just list the intersections we want to have looked at. That way everybody's looking at the same thing and nobody gets some crutch down.
All right.
That's my thoughts.
I guess my question is, is how do we come up with a list of intersections?
I think we're just, I was about to say.
Understand that, but is it going to be based on any data that I need to pull together?
I think we probably name them all right now.
Yeah, we know our worst intersection.
I think that's kind of, I mean, I'm just going to be devil, devil's advocate here. That's kind of the whole situation here is we're looking for some data and expert opinion to go off of. And we don't want to be, you know, let's just take me for instance, if I go out District Four and I come back with four intersections.
We've got that crash data that they furnished us. And again, a lot of this wording I wouldn't hear specifically because I was trying to get a grant to do it with. So there's, some of the wording is kind of shaped towards that goal.
I definitely think we should have a list, like Commissioner Dorsey says, but I'm, I'm wondering if on, just for this RFP, if we couldn't just have top or priority list intersections? And then when they come back asking for those intersections, we would have that list provided for them.
Sure, I mean, everybody will do. If you want to send me the list, I'd be glad to.
Send the list and take the crash data.
But then we might do a survey of the roads and stuff, they'll see these intersections because they'll go through them and they go look at them, won't they?
I would imagine they're going to pull their own crash data and traffic, traffic data.
It's coming from the same database though, should be. We should specify what database it's coming from, GDOT's data.
Only thing about GDOT data is it's going to run at least two years behind.
Well, the other part is too, these roads are going to be spelled differently, like Mount Iwlet may be N T period.
I mean, we, we could probably furnish them from nine one one data, just general nine one, just the responses to these intersections. With, that they can buy them or whatever they else they get.
That would be more up to date, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, only one we got for that grant thing, that's the only ones that GSP worked. None of the local stuff has worked, I mean, at that time, GSP was working on a rig. So if it was something that there wasn't any significant injuries in, it may have been handled by the sheriff's office and not included in that report.
We could pull it together and just get it, and then at next meeting, we could vote to add an addendum to it. With that, I say all right, is that bothering?
On the public workshops, I was adding to the two public meetings because, I mean, we all know this, that you're not going to get full participation in public meetings. So letting these engineering firms propose additional outreach strategies, which they're going to be very, very familiar with, whether it's using surveys or some other tactic in order to get engagement from key stakeholders.
So what, what are we looking to gain from that? I mean, that's, that's, that could easily get political if we don't go on this.
That's pretty much standard, and if you look at any RFP, whether it's Georgia or Countrywide, that you're going to have standard public workshop input. Long-range planning and modeling, let's see, use transportation planning models to forecast future demand, identify infrastructure priorities. I put vendors should note if tools used are compatible with GDOT systems, which I mean, you would imagine if they're bidding on it, they would be, but just kind of going in more detail. And concluding there, just the possibility of adding numeric data, PCI method, traffic site count, to give more scoreable data.
So under, go back to long-range planning and modeling. I think we also should add in there about maintaining this because this is something that's going to have to be looked at on a regular basis. Otherwise, it's a one and done, and it's not going to be looked at again. It's got to be updated. If you're going to continue to use it in the direction of where you want to go, it's got to be constantly looked at.
Yes, I, I agree with there, and should we not put that in deliverables too? That part of the deliverables should be that year, year-on-year maintenance plan, I guess. Would that be correct? How it would be worded?
Yeah, that'd be a word, but that would include a long-term contract, that what you're looking for.
Couldn't you put a number on that, like a five-year maintenance plan? I think it's a ten years, could they not just put it a ten-year maintenance road?
The plan, yes. They'll write the plan out for that many, but I'm talking about coming back and keeping that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's going to entail a long-term contract.
Wonder if they come every other year?
This is a proposal, so we'll see what they say.
Yeah.
You know, I said, wonder if they'd come every other year.
Well, if we have the data, you could probably bid that out or just every other year, put it back out for bid if you got the original data you want to compare it to.
Well, when they evaluate this stuff, they're going to put each road down that this need this year, this year, this year, and this year. They'll put the years in there.
They'll look at the years, it's a value rate, it's not going to say it needs it this year or that year. I mean, we go, that's going to change.
Yeah, well, I know it changed, but they're going to give you some idea about this road. They're going to say that, like our new paved road, they're going to say this road is going to give ten years, whatever, five years.
Won't ever be able to predict that because of traffic. You don't know what the traffic's going to be.
Well, I think it'll give us some idea. If it didn't, they'd say seventy-five, eighty percent of our roads are trashed.
I think, I think you're going to find that seventy-five, eighty percent of them are going to be in a fair, fair condition.
Do we kind of have a consensus there about putting the, like a long-term year, year, year-on-year strategy of plan? I guess is, is how they need it, like a maintenance plan?
Well, that may be something we could discuss.
With them.
I still think it needs to be in the RFP. That way they know this is something, this is something we're looking for.
Most companies do that anyway. They're, they're continuous researching and evaluating the roads after the system, if we go into a contract.
I mean, I'm, I'm seeing things like where we may have, I don't know if I'm not picking on anything, but you got a new poultry farm on this road that was, that didn't see a lot of truck traffic, and then it starts seeing all this truck traffic. That's going to change. What was the best road in the county this year, three years from now, might be one of your worst. That's why you got to keep updating it.
So we're saying every year or every other year?
It might be every two years. I mean, but just need to, they need to recommend. It might be every two years, I mean, but you just need to, they need to recommend, if they're doing these studies, they should be able to recommend what it takes.
Is there a possibility, what I'm trying to weed out is if it's in the, if it's in the packet here, that it is a contract that was a long-term contract, that's how they're gonna bid it. But it's almost like we want to have the option, the option of, hey, you give us the plan, you're gone.
With the option of whatever.
Because we may change how we, how we do business internally over the next couple of years. And so, to have a contract for ten years with an engineering firm may not be suitable.
If you see how I got it listed down, once we get down to the proposal format, I got a list of, it gives us the call proposals and details and other sections. And in its entirety, for each one of these steps.
On deliverables, the only two things I had that, suggestions was on the third item draft and final pavement condition index, just adding to that. With GIS integration, and then the summary of public engagement activities and, and public comments. And then if we go to section five. I put, should we add interview phase for top scores? Yeah, that would be similar, that doesn't like go with section seven. So, is this, how is this now, is we would get the bids and then just kind of like some other bid types that we would get, assess them, and then vote on them? And not have an interview phase, should we have an interview phase for top scores or some type of scoring criteria, if you would?
No, we can put that in there.
I think it would be good.
It might be, give us more opportunity to kind of ask them what, what their, what their proposal entails. And then lastly, I had that, should we add options pre-bid meeting or virtual Q and A? But I think Terrell answered that, that you would put in there the any questions or concerns, they would email you and you'd be able to clarify versus trying to schedule a meeting. So, I think we extenuate that, that last part.
But, I mean, as far as the, the dates, time span between sending out and getting back, I'll have to, I'll just check what, what the normal thing is for folks to do that, to give them enough time to get their stuff together. I just punched in numbers today, I would do them. And those numbers reflect what that grant was required.
Ten days, that's mighty quick.
Yeah, that, that grant stipulation, this work had to be done by a certain date, that's, that's where that date came from. And just so you know, well, I think I emailed everybody, but the grant does not cover this kind of stuff, this actual physical stuff that it's done.
So, essentially, we could take that, I mean, we are gonna take that out altogether then, and just go back to what's.
The grant.
Yeah, since this, this part.
This didn't qualify, I turned around and put down, I went by their road list and put all the strapping for all of those roads, the stop signs, the flashing stop signs, everything right down their list.
The strapping wasn't under the grant, was it?
Yeah, he wasn't gonna let me, but I talked to him and I kind of, I said, we don't do those stuff, so he said, okay, well, we'll accept the rigor strapping something.
Good.
So, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars worth there.
That was clever. That was clever.
So, just scratch all this right here.
Getting, yeah, getting, getting the flashing stop signs, all that stuff in there too, for all, for some of those bad intersections, anything going there, I had to stay with their list of roads, prioritize.
To answer your first question, Jeff, I, I think RFP is sufficient. I mean, I'm good with that, and it initially seemed like it started anyway, so.
All right. I say, y'all, 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 send me your list and for intersections you want to spell out specifically, that's fine, whatever y'all wanna do, just so I know which ones you want. If you wanna do them that way.
One thing I wanna throw out, after we get, we go and get in discussion, I'll throw something out, just something for everybody to think about.
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said, Commissioner Dorsey.
I said, I've got something else I want to add to this a little bit, I want to get into discussion, just nothing negative or anything.
All right.
So, we have a motion to send this as amended for bid.
I think y'all gonna look at it again at the next meeting, correct?
So, we issue an addendum with the intersections at next meeting. That's what I said, I mean, I don't know if that's what you wanna do or you want.
Put these changes in and send it out?
Are we good with all the changes? Then, we took out on item one, take that out, leave it RFP, and then we're taking out the proposal date, of course, and put, you're just going to put in whatever the standard date is. And then we take out section seven, and which was the, this is all the feedback, we're not taking out section seven, taking out the Q and A and virtual options, we don't need that, because Terrell's gonna handle via email.
So, they get, I can shoot it up, blast it out to y'all and get y'all's opinion on how you want to answer.
I'm kind of, you know, I see both sides of the naming the intersections, but I kind of like the idea of them naming the intersections, because we know our intersections, and if they don't name one of the intersections we know that's pretty bad, we, we might not want to do business with that.
That's true too.
So.
Well, no names go to intersection until after the study's done.
Yeah. I think we was just trying to make sure that we got it.
They made it until after the study's done.
I think what I was hitting at was, are they gonna be looking at and say, oh, well, they want every single intersection done, or we're just gonna give them like a top number or a list?
That's why I kind of worked it.
To me, they will come there, look at all of them.
What we need to do, I was, I think, is give Terrell our top ones in each district, and he can pull the data, crash data, and he can see what's there, and he can go from there. If we miss something, then you, you got the data, you can come back to us. Because the data's what it's gonna be all based off of anyway.
This list we got, six weeks ago, remember the one with all the crashes and all the different roads and this, that, the other, how old was that list?
Two years.
Two years.
This is, it's missing some stuff.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
There was a lot of questions on the roads, some of them were named twice.
Twice, three times, whatever. You picked out one that was missing a ton of crashes.
Oh, but yeah, I think we can go ahead and vote on this tonight, and then we can add the intersections next week and next meeting.
Yeah, because I mean, if they're gonna need thirty, sixty days, then they can be working on it, and then we can get that, and then they're gonna be back and forth asking questions anyways.
All right, we have a motion to send out as amended.
I give you a motion, send out as amended.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Bennett, any other discussion?
Just one thing I want to just mention, if this comes back and it's not something that we can afford, just I want everybody to think about this, Jeff and I have talked about this already, and I've talked to Terrell. We, we know that, Terrell's got a lot on his plate, if this doesn't come back where it's something affordable, I think it's time, instead of looking for an assistant county administrator, we need to look for a public works director. That way, this stuff can be done in-house, and then we've got somebody to take a lot of the engineering workload off of Terrell that he was doing with subdivisions and all the other stuff that's going on. Just, I just wanted to throw that out, because this is something that a public works director could do, and John Cami did before. But you gotta be able to maintain it and all that, and that's where we kind of had the, the fall off, so we can see what it costs and then look at our budget.
That was my holdup with the, the year in, year out, sure, definitely would like a plan, but committing to a, a long-term contract with an engineer and then us end up.
Possibly, yeah.
Getting a public works director.
Well, we had a position like that at one time out there.
We've got the position, it's still.
That's what Terrell found this, John Cami, public works director.
And again, you just swap the money we based it for assistant administrator, just swap it over to the public works, and the money's already.
And it will, it will really kill two birds with one stone.
Yeah.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
My opinion, that would give the taxpayers the biggest bang for their buck.
I think that's a great suggestion, Commissioner Dorsey, I think we definitely need to look at that, for sure.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right. We'll move on down to new business thirteen A, engine, defense, defense, public defender agreement and budget request, we go through this every year, don't want to miss any.
The trade standard has got a small increase built in, I think they said five percent. If you look at attachment A, which is behind the signature page, that's gonna be our proposed contribution.
And that's with the five percent added?
Yes. Yes, that's the total.
It's something we gotta do anyway, right?
Yeah, and Elbert County is still agreeable on, you know, collecting the money and paying that out for everyone. And subsequent to this, they sent in the breakdown, so Elbert County is fourteen percent of the total number of cases, Franklin County's twenty-six percent, Hart County's twenty-four percent. Madison County is twenty-three percent, Elbertorpe County is thirteen percent, so that is how they broke that total expense down. Five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents total for personnel and funding, salaries, benefits, administrative fees, and supplemental pay to meet state minimum salary requirements for five attorneys and two administrative assistants, and that'll run from.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, five oh vote, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to surplus transit van.
Yeah, we received under GDOT grant program, a new transit van, they've all just the existing van we've got for nineteen thousand something.
Nineteen six.
Yeah, and I checked with Ed on it, Ed says the van's in good shape, and it's well worth that money if, if y'all want to get it. Right now, we don't have a, a van like we used to do riding around looking at roads, we don't really have a van to do that with no more. Plus, the senior center can't use the official transit van anymore to like take their seniors on a road trip to whatever, they can't use that van anymore for that, they changed the rules this year. So, that's some of the uses it could be done for, if we keep that stuff to y'all, but I don't, I don't think we can buy something, it's got about a hundred thousand miles, best I remember, for that money anywhere else, without the capabilities, but.
What else could it be used for?
You could use it for anything, as far as it goes, anywhere you need to, you need multiple people to go, you could use it for that. Again. Used to the four H, would use the other van once or twice a year, and like I said, the senior center would be the most one, would be using it the most, just in practical stuff.
But I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
And the money, the money can come out of contingencies. And just so you know, last, was it last week Frankie was in here and y'all approved it for Frankie Gray, I already had that money budgeted in, in all the money, so it's not coming out of the contingency.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Brown, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, we'll move on to credit for experience jail.
Sheriff Carol had, that a new hire had at the jail is a deputy jailer, certified deputy and a jailer. Be given credit for eight years' experience as a deputy jailer, she began working on the twenty-eighth of May. So, the request included making it retroactive to that paper, last paper?
I make a motion to approve this and make the request to be retroactive.
Second.
To higher date, we have a motion, second, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote. All right, then we'll move on to permission to rebid the medical.
The sheriff and I, we've been talking for the last several weeks, when we bid this out originally, we were guessing what we were gonna have, population or whatever. Now, we got a pretty good idea, plus there's a new administration to the sheriff's office, so we thought it'd be a good idea just to rebid this while we got time. We gotta have ninety days if we do want to change, we gotta give the other vendor ninety day notice. So, we're just updating the same bid we sent out last time with the new numbers, concrete numbers, because we were telling the old jailman we ordered the last time. And just update that bid and send it back out and, and see what happens.
Was our numbers inflated the last time when we bid it out? Above now, is what I'm saying.
No, they, they was probably below now, but you go, there was, there was, there was a clause in there where there's extra added as you go. And that's running about just under eight thousand dollars a month.
So, what I'm saying is, we're getting higher charges right now.
Well, I mean, I hope, I hope always to get, to come back in at a lower price, so.
I'm finally rebidding it.
I give you a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Dorsey, any other discussion? Which we hired jailers so we could house more inmates from when we were.
I looked at the revenue off of inmates. You know, and since we moved in, took over, a little over a million dollars of revenue in off of inmate housing. Where we're.
From other counties? From other counties.
From other counties, correct. This.
That's true. Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a revenue line, I mean, they ain't counting no expenses coming out of it.
But that, that is revenue that we didn't have.
Yeah, that's just a little over a year, right?
Yeah, now, this fiscal year's been about eight hundred thousand so far, that, that's comes out of that million. But I remind them, the payments is about a million dollars a year.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we didn't do anything with that last administrative request he had, you know, he, he requested administrative, a new administrative.
That's just a new budget, that's, that's going in a new budget.
All right, we got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, okay, it's five oh vote. All right, now we come to public comment, anyone here like to speak to the board on any kind of issues going on in the county? I see none, so we'll move on to executive session for litigation personnel, real estate, they have a motion to.
So be.
Executive session.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, and second by Commissioner Brown. We'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's five oh vote, thank you all for being here tonight.